This time, we're going to go into public hearing. This board is going to step aside and the elementary enrollment committee will come forward.
I just got new glasses today and they're not the distance, but I really need them for me to learn it as I go. Hello, everybody. Really glad to be here. Did everyone get a PowerPoint presentation? So you can read along if you want or take notes as you go. So first, I want to start by extending, where is Keith? Sending a thank you to Keith and the other town managers for this opportunity to come in front of you tonight. The enrollment task force met with the town managers and we were trying to collaborate, figure out ways where we could bring the message of the enrollment task force to the communities in different ways. And they suggested that we come to a regularly scheduled town meeting, which felt like a great way to sort of meet people where they were at. My name is Sarah Deray and I'm a resident of Kennebunkport. I have three children in the school district currently, one at Consolidated and two at the high school. And I have been on the enrollment task force. This is my second year. I'm also a board member and I serve as the chair of this committee. The presentation that you're going to see tonight is going to be myself, Ken Lebec, and Joe Simler. Unfortunately, Dr. Podenziano, our superintendent, is out sick today, so he would have been here, but he's unable to be here. So tonight, we're going to go through, actually pretty quickly, a bunch of slides, but we'll get started and you can jump in at the end and answer questions. We'll answer questions. So over the last 10 years, our communities have worked really hard to collaborate and share resources and invest in schools through a three-town-one-community philosophy. Despite this, there are a variety of factors that have caused an imbalance in the enrollment: aging population, the cost of building housing, declining enrollment. So in some cases, our communities have seen an increase and a growth, and in some other communities, we've seen a decrease and a decline. You'll hear more on that tonight. So to date, assignment two in a elementary school has been based primarily on the town in which a student is enrolled. As a result, some classes and some grade cohorts that you'll see later are quite large and pushing the limits of what we currently have designed for or assigned as class-size policy. And on the flip side, we have some classrooms that are actually under our class-size policy. And we believe, and you'll hear later, that that's really because we have been strictly enrolling kids based on the town of residence in which they live, right? And so we have four elementary schools, two for Kennebunk, one for Kennebunkport, and one for Arundel. And that has impacted where kids are placed. While efforts have been made to mitigate these stresses, none have focused on what we think is a systems-wide or holistic response that addresses all of these unique challenges that we'll talk about tonight. So over the next 20 minutes or so, we are going to talk with you and share a little bit about what we've learned about the current enrollment challenges and the impacts across the district. We're also going to talk briefly about the history of the enrollment task force and the current work that we've done over the last year. And we're going to present to you, which I know everybody's most excited to hear about, the current pending recommendations and the journey that we took to get here. So just so people know the process, this is our third presentation. We presented in Kennebunkport. Last week, we presented in Kennebunk. We'll present in Arundel tonight. The enrollment task force will come back together on Wednesday for our final meeting. And then our plan right now is to present as a first read to the full board on March 25th, Wednesday evening, at 6 o'clock. It's not a school board meeting. It'll be a special meeting, and so we're going to be bringing these recommendations forward. We're also going to save time at the end to be able to answer any of your questions, so drop them down. All right, so very briefly, in 2018, the RSU 21 formed a work group and was charged with developing recommendations for balancing and stabilizing the number of students enrolled in RSU 21 elementary schools. After 10 months, that original task force presented a final report. And in that final report, there were six recommendations. Within those recommendations, there were three approaches. So if people have been following this journey all along, those three approaches were actually where this new task force started, began. So after that original presentation from the task force, the board at that time decided that they needed more information. There just wasn't enough information presented in those three approaches for the board to feel comfortable that either or any of them were a good recommendation. So the new task force was formed in September, and we have been meeting from that point quite regularly. So what you're going to see up here is this is our new charge. And essentially, it's exactly the same what we've been trying to do really hard. And what you'll hear is really try and gather feedback from our community stakeholders as well. All right, so the very first piece that I will talk about, just to familiarize everybody, I'm sure that everybody here knows this, but when they watch, don't. Currently, we have four elementary schools in our district that services about 1,100 students, grade pre-K through five. So we have KES. Currently, there's about 432 students enrolled. And KES serves pre-K through grade two. Its sister school, or partner school, is Seerode School, and that service is grades three through five. Currently has about 312 students. Down at Kennebunkport is the Consolidated School. Right now, it has about 143 students. Important to note, and you'll hear, that we have less than 100 resident-enrolled students down at Consolidated. So a little over 40 are actually students that already come from Arundel or Kennebunk or Superintendent. And then at Mildredal Day, currently here, services, as you know, grades K through five, and has about 220 students. All right, so these next three slides are going to show you the historical enrollment trends in our four elementary schools. So as you can see on this slide, there's been pretty relatively steady enrollment in Arundel over the last 10 years. And that resulted in a pretty robust population to fill Arundel. What's interesting to know is that the current population of resident students is actually larger than what can fit in Mildredal Day. It's about 272. And the capacity for Mildredal Day is around 230. So Mildredal Day is already at capacity. The number of resident students kiddos right now is greater than what can actually fit in MLDA. So this slide right here talks a little bit about the historical enrollment and breaks it down between Kennebunk and Seerode. And it shows a slightly declining enrollment grades K through five, with an overall decline of 88 students at the highest year of enrollment in 2010. It's important to note that only with the addition of pre-K at KES, and those numbers are not on here in the sort of graph on the side, but there's a note down at the bottom that when we began the pre-K program at KES, it jumped up the numbers to 783 in 2018 and 744. But we would have continued to see a decline had we not done that previously. And Consolidated, so enrollment at Consolidated has consistently been the most drastic, dropping from 209 students in 2008 to our current enrollment of 143, of which 46 are non-resident students. So over the last seven months, the enrollment task force has explored and unpacked the many ways and imbalance of enrollment impacts our students and our staff. From decreasing diversity in both educational programming and in student population, to having a direct impact on teaching, instruction, and learning, the inequities are experienced and felt at all of our schools. So we took a really deep dive to explore how this imbalance in enrollment was affecting, not just Consolidated, right? So we saw that pretty steady decline, but we took a really deep dive to look at what does that mean at KES? What does that mean at MLDA? And at KES, what you'll see later, the class sizes there are pretty large, much larger than at some of the other schools, right? And so the impact of enrollment, the increase there, has impacted class sizes. We've heard from teachers that they have less time to do direct instruction, one-to-one instruction with students, because they have a class size of 22. Or in the same grade at another elementary school, they may have 13 or 14. So at KES, larger class sizes have resulted in the need to hire additional support staff at the cost of the district. And they have, as I mentioned, limited time for one-to-one instruction. At MLDA, while there's been a steady growth, which has resulted in that healthy elementary population, that resident population is over 270, which cannot fit in the school by itself. And at KCS, resident enrollment, as you can see, is under 100 students, with some classrooms as small as 14. So if you're familiar with the class-size policy, that's in some place, actually in all of the grades. That's significantly lower under class-size policy. So as you can see here, the class size varies significantly between the four different elementary schools. If you see the numbers in red, what you're going to notice there is that those are significant differences in the average class sizes between schools. So I like to point out kindergarten. So at KES, the average kindergarten class size is 18.5, whereas the average, I don't care, the average class size at Mildredal Day is 18, and at KCS, it's 13.3. And then if you look at fifth grade, for example, the average class size at Seerode is 24.6. At KCS, it's 17.3, and at Mildredal Day, it's 24, right? So I've been told I haven't been here about that. The grade five at MLDA is quite large. Because enrollment has been based primarily on town of residence, the impact of dips and decreases in resident births are often felt in not-so-subtle ways. This slide shows you how our current enrollment numbers vary pretty drastically between our four schools. And finally, in my section, the work of our enrollment task force has identified the many different ways that our unified district benefits all of us collectively. All three towns have sacrificed to join, and all three towns have benefited. Up here, you'll see some of those examples: from newly renovated schools, sharing of constant resources, access to a robust curriculum, actual curriculum activities, strong test scores, and cross-district events and activities that build early and meaningful relationships. It's simply what we believe we do better when we work together. I'm going to turn it over to Joe, who's going to talk about our committee's work.
So I joined, when did I join? November?
November.
November, as Ken became our new school board representative. So I got, I dived in pretty decently early on for this year around, but we spent a lot of time, it was a lot of three-hour meetings almost every other week. So we did quite a bit of work and we looked at a lot of different data. And we kept sort of requesting data from Steve and Phil and just getting a lot of data. So we had three approaches at the beginning. They were identified during last year's committee. We had multiple public forums through that. I think Sarah and mostly Sarah sifted through that data and came up with sort of 12 other sort of community-driven proposals on that. And we went through sort of that together. So we really looked at a lot of different factors here. And just like, how could we make this work? Like, could we move pre-K, some of pre-K around, and then that would add some more students to KCS? Should we maintain, right, the current way the schools are? Should we reconfigure the schools? One of the proposals was reconfiguring to make KCS and Arundel look more like a Seerode and KES. So things like that. All of these things were considered. And you can see, there was just a lot of things that we looked through. We would go through, in some meetings, just point by point and sort of break them down and be, what's the advantages and disadvantages of this approach? Are these reasonable approaches? The last one was mentioned, right? I think what keeps getting said is we're dropping in enrollment, right? The numbers of our students are going down. So the big one was like, well, why don't we just close the school? And then we really dived into the numbers and were like, we don't have enough spaces in our... Three of our schools would not be able to fit all of the students that we have within all three towns, so. And again, we're really aware of sort of the grandfathering and delayed implementation. And that approach, we'll talk about a little bit as we sort of talk about our recommendation. But we're really just, I guess, really want to say that we're really aware, I hoped that as a committee, I think we were truly aware of just everybody, the impact on everyone, students especially, but the towns too. We looked at all of these factors, and all of these factors came part of our considerations when we were coming up with our recommendations, right? Some of these approaches were really expensive, so they were going to cost a lot of money. So there was a lot of feedback on, you know, parents not wanting their kids to be on a bus for an hour and a half. The bus times is a really important factor. And again, we talked about sort of just the overall trends, projections, class sizes, school start times, so when they're starting, just all of those factors. And again, really aware of disrupting families, I think is another big one that I think we're all really concerned about, of really trying to minimize disruption of current students and current families that are in our district already, so. And again, a lot of research done, you know. We had initial enrollment numbers done for us. Again, asking Steve almost every time, sometimes in the middle of meetings, asking him for numbers. Oh, well, how many, you know, classroom, how many students could we fit here? We did this and this. So really looking and trying to get data for this. Again, sort of, there were three proposals to start with. Again, we went through them, pros and cons, you know. I think we went through possibly every single thing that we could think of that would make it, you know, yes, no, oh, no, that's not going to work. Some of them were easy. Like, once we were like, oh, okay, well, we don't have the space to put them into three schools. So that was an easy one to take off. And again, we had multiple, a couple of, it was two, right?
Three.
Three, three community forums where many people came out and gave us their ideas. And that's where a lot of, that informed the committee of what we should be looking at. And during some of those, right, we asked people to work in small groups and brainstorm for us just to give us another, more perspective on everything, so. And all of that was shared with us. And we had surveys out, we had those community forums, okay? So what we came down to during looking at all that, right? This is not an easy solution, right? This is not going to be relatively like, oh, cool, it was just this little thing that we forgot. And we could just do that, so. But we did really want to minimize disruption through sort of a staged implementation. So we don't want to just be like, okay, so next year, everybody's going to a different school. We don't want that to happen. We want to really minimize those disruptions to the students, right? Any other approaches that were being considered, okay? Sometimes you might live closer to a school that you are then assigned to, okay? But we'll get into that a little bit more. Again, we are well aware of bus times and locations to schools as being an important thing. And, right, and they might have, right? We already are doing this, as Sarah stated, in Arundel especially. We already have students from one town going to another town school, because we just can't fit them all here. So all of them are going to have some busing across town lines.
You doing okay so far? All right, so my name is Ken Lebec. I'm a resident of Arundel. I started off on the committee as a committee member and then joined the school board a couple of months after that. So let me just walk through a recommendation that we're going to be taking to the school board. So it comes in two phases. So everything they've talked about, I'm basically going to talk about. What are we proposing? What's the solution? One thing I do want to reinforce before I walk through this. We actually thought we were on to something early on. This was probably three months ago. We're like, I think we're figuring it out. Then we asked for a request from NESDEC, which is the New England School Development Council. And everything we had done, we just got this new pack of data, and it was like, oh, Kennebunk, you know, presidency's going to go way up, and we're like, this doesn't make any sense, right? This is against everything that we thought would happen. So we really had, we took all of that information into account, and we landed here. So phase one, so beginning of fall 2020, all new families, pre-K through five, who are enrolling after June 1st, will go through a central registration process. So the way it looks today, if I'm going to come to MLDA, right? I'm going to come to the school. I'm going to tell the principal, I want to bring my student here, my son and my daughter. And you go through the process, you learn about the school. What we're going to do moving forward, right, is you're going to go to the central office over at KES, where the administration is, and you're going to sign up your child to be part of the school district, okay? The way they're going to place our kiddos is going through these kind of checks and balances here. There's not one that's more important than the other, right? It's basically a combination of all of these together. So the class size, the location of the student, right? So if they're closer to Kennebunkport, maybe that's a factor that plays into it, right? Preferences of the school, so the parent may say, look, we have another child in the school. That kind of goes into the sibling piece too. I already have a child in second grade. I don't want my kids split up. That's going to be one of the considerations for the superintendent. Student needs, so if the child requires any special education and the services aren't at a specific school, maybe that's a situation where they would be placed in a different school. So again, these are all the things that the superintendent is going to look at when they go to place the child. Phase two, so the current policy as it states today is the superintendent, as written, has the authority to move kids where kids are needed. That's the policy today. Really what this is doing is giving more guidance to the superintendent around executing that policy. And so there's a phase two here, where if we can't figure out enough kids to balance the schools right away, then we're going to ask the superintendent to say, okay, let's look at the current kids in the system. These might be students that come in on a superintendent agreement, or they're in transfers, or they might be coming from outside the district into the district, where that giving town is paying the RSU to send their child here. There may be a situation where Phil says, or the new superintendent says, we have room available at this school. I know you live in Arundel, but would you consider sending your child to this school because we have room available there? And so there's going to be a conversation between the families and the superintendent. And that's the way it's going to work. Any questions? So basically, the recommendation is really going to improve the equity and the balance of enrollment. So Sarah was talking about earlier, some of these classrooms have very little, some of them have a lot. It's just not fair for the kids, especially those that have large classes, to just not have that one-on-one time with the teacher as some of the other schools might. It's going to minimize disruption for enrollment. We've really identified a lot of triggers here, so this doesn't happen again. So we have levers that we can pull at certain times. We're basically going to put a bar or draw a line in the sand to say, okay, moving forward, once we fix this, if it ever happens again, we're going to catch it sooner. And again, the superintendent's going to have the knowledge to say, all right, I see something coming. I'm going to start implementing policy changes or implementing the policy to balance the enrollment. It streamlines the location for new enrollment, so again, central registration is what we're going to call it, where you go through the superintendent's office to do that. All the students are going to have transportation. So if there's students, for example, from Arundel that live really close, so let's say maybe on the other side of Route 1, if that bus is en route to KES, or sorry, KCS, that might be a situation where the family says, yeah, I'd love to send my kid to KCS because it's actually closer than MLDA. That's something that may work. And then it's definitely going to establish a process for the superintendent to... At the end of the day, they're in charge of making this happen. We just need to make sure the superintendent does it. So we're providing additional guidance and going to recommend some policy changes to some of the language in there that may help that. Okay, we're almost at the end over here. So we talked about the classroom sizes already. Student population as needed, again, the superintendent's going to place the students where they're needed and where it makes the most sense so they have an equitable education. The financial impact was really big. I want everyone to know that as we looked at some of these ideas, some of the ones we looked at would have cost the three communities over $700,000 a year. I don't know if we can sustain that. But I can tell you, this plan is really not going to cost anything at all. So that's good news, right? How often does someone come to you with a plan that's not going to cost that much money? Student impact, there's not going to be student impact, a large student impact of those currently in the school system. There may be little changes here and there, but I think most of the students, if they're in a classroom today, they're in a school, they're going to stay there. That's the plan. It minimizes the busing impact. It minimizes the amount of time they're on the bus, what time they have to get picked up in the morning. All of those things were really thought out to come to this plan. When we look at public sentiment through those community building exercises we had, 89% of the attendees said minimizing transportation was important to them. And 83% said assigning to a school based on proximity to the building made the most sense. And then the last slide here, it's going to provide protection against inconsistent enrollment projections moving forward. It's going to maintain structural continuity, preserves varied district options, requires monitoring from the superintendent to make sure that this doesn't happen again. And then it establishes consistency and transparency, so everyone's going to know what to expect. We've worked very closely with the towns, I believe. Even at some point, the real estate folks, we're kind of getting some guidance from them, like, hey, if new families moving in the town, what are they being told? And so the idea is to make sure that the real estate agents know that, hey, if you come to Arundel, or you come to Kennebunk, or you go to Kennebunkport, your child may not go to the school in the town, but we're all one district anyway. So we're going to do what makes the most sense for your child and what works for the district. So some of the things that we looked at as far as the impacts of the recommendations. Some students will attend a school other than the one that is geographically closest to home. Some students will attend a school other than the one that is in the town of residence. We talked about that. And the short-term inequities are not immediately solved because this is going to be a phased approach. We're not going to fix, all the large classes aren't going to be small all of a sudden, and all the small ones aren't going to be large. This is kind of going to happen over a few years. But the hope is that by doing it staged that way, that there's less impact to the students, and that's what it's all about. And one more, all right. So we're going to be reviewing the student superintendent agreements. So Phil, our current interim superintendent, is already looking at this. He sent letters out to everyone already, basically telling them, okay, we're going to look at the superintendent agreements for next year, and those can be viewed annually. He also made a decision that pre-K would be staying at KES. So that's a superintendent decision he's already made that wasn't in the scope of our group. And that all the kids, once they're done, pre-K at KES, they go back to their town of residence. Whereas before, if someone from Arundel or Kennebunkport went to KES to preschool, they could have stayed in Kennebunk. So instead of doing that, everyone goes back to their hometown after preschool, okay? Again, depending on the space available in the school. So we're going to work with the second-grade families transitioning from KES to Seerode to see if they'd like to go to KCS. We're also going to look at the current bus routes to see if there's any way we can maneuver the buses or make sense of where the buses are traveling to pick up kids from other towns en route to get to KCS. And we're going to use the new placement factors to inform the in-district transfers that we talked about earlier as well. So we're going to make the three of us available real quick to answer any questions you may have about the presentation. Is there anything that's interesting? Dan?
A couple of questions. Dan DuBois from Arundel. How was this communicated to the general public?
This plan here?
This meeting.
How was it communicated?
Yeah, was there a path to try to get up as many people as possible?
Yes.
Yes, so the way that the district handled that communication is we blasted social media. It went out in the superintendent's newsletter, it went out on Facebook, it went out on email reminders from each of the elementary school principals to parents. And it went out in, I don't know, it was one other place, I'm just trying to think. It went out in a lot of places. And then we worked collaboratively with the towns to say, you push it out on all of your ways because we don't want it to just be parents. We wanna engage the community, people who may, may have had children in the district or maybe not, to make sure that we're getting a full sort of, um, broad structure of feedback.
Um, the other question that I had is, Germany expansion, when you guys were going through the expansion, was there an enrollment, um, study done?
Hmm, good question. So the last projected enrollment study was done in 2015. And that was done with planning decisions. Um, and it is what the last task force used to, to think about all of our data moving forward. And essentially what that said is, um, Kenabunk Port's gonna continue to decline pretty significantly. Arundel's gonna go up and Kenabunk's gonna stay about the same. We then had Steve and our administrative team look at the data. And essentially, they saw the same thing, um, in as, in as much as Kenabunk might go down a little bit, but stay about the same, Arundel would continue to go up, but Kenabunk Port might start to go up a little bit. And as Ken mentioned, we, in that process, we also worked with NESDEC, which is National, you know, New England School Development Council, and asked them if they could also do like a mini projected enrollment study. And what that came back with was, Kenabunk population is gonna go through the roof. It's gonna be back up to 200 in five years. And Arundel's gonna...
Stay flat.
Stay flat. And Kenabunk's gonna stay flat. And that sort of threw us for this tremendous loop. We had been looking at each moving C Road to be four or five for the entire district and making all of the elementary schools pre-K through third grade. There had been a lot of things that we were looking at. So the projected enrollment study had not been done since 2015. And what we have, what we are recommending through this process is that we redo that, that that is redone at an administrative level in the full capacity that that study was done because we're not confident, we're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna make huge changes to the district based on that newer information at this point. If that comes back and that looks consistent because the projected birth enrollment or birth, birth numbers for Kenabunk Port were completely off and they ended up being much higher than they were, which is a possibility, that might be true. But we did it, so we had some data, and they had some data, I think, back when, when the renovations were happening. It was done in 2014, 2015.
So is, is there any explanation why it's so far off?
Well, the, one of the hard parts, Dan, was that we actually went back to planning decisions to say, hey, can we get an updated review since you did our initial one? And that way we would've had a baseline, a good baseline from one organization and then a follow-up. Problem is they went out of business. And so we couldn't trust just going off one and not the other. We had to look at the data as a whole and say, let's just pick a place in the middle. So we were kinda looking at it from like a 10% range. So if the, if the district enrollment is plus or minus 10%, if we go in this direction, we're, we're gonna be able to handle it on both sides. Whereas if some of the other decisions or, or solutions that we were looking at, had we pulled the trigger on one of those and then it went totally the opposite way, the towns would've been in a very bad place 'cause the capacity wouldn't have worked with that new structure. So this was the safest thing with the data we had and all the considerations we had with busing time and cost.
The biggest change that we noticed though was the birth rates in Kenabunk. So what was projected in 2015, what actually came to be in 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, were much higher than what was projected.
In real time.
In real time, right? So we know that if they projected 15, it was actually 2.5, right? So there were, that was a big difference. But it is not, and we're worried that it's not enough to actually show that in, I mean, that's a big difference to go from 140 to 200 in the next five years, that, that felt. So I think that's the biggest difference that we actually saw on the paper. And so what we're hoping will pass in the budget is the funding to be able to do another full projected enrollment study to really dig into those demographics.
It's just, it's disappointing that we just spent a bunch of money expanding the school and we're already busting through the, through the seams of the school.
And I don't think it's that dumb growing either, right?
Yeah.
Right, yeah. And, and I think from the planning study too, I think the, the one that was done in 2014, 2015, I think that was the year that they had like the really low birth rate was their last data point. So I really, really wonder how that affected their projection, you know? I'm just like, I'm just throwing that out there as like, I know they had all that historical data, but then they see this like drop and... So that, that's what I think we're...
They did an extensive one in 2010 as well, yeah. So it's actually due, it's every five years that you do a real full enrollment.
I think your point is well made though, Dan, right? And so the point is, we can do our best job at predicting the future and the reality is we will never know, right? So Jack, who's come to all of our enrollment meetings, has been consistently honest to say, you can do good enough, you're never gonna have a crystal ball. And so what we believe this recommendation does is it allows us to be flexible with what is known, right? Students that we have. It allows us to impact the least the students that we have. It allows us to message us clearly, right? I think this transparent piece around how administration is making decisions to, to make sure that this doesn't ever become a problem again, right? Because in some ways, we've known that this has been a continuing decline for a while. This in real time requires administration, requires the district to have a finger on the pulse all the time and not wait five years for an enrollment, projected enrollment.
And I think to speak to that too, it's, I mean, if the enrollments turn out to be what NESDEC says is, this allows for, you know, basically people staying in their own town school as much as possible without busting at the seams. Like, I know, 'cause I have two kids in, in ML Day. I have a third grader and a, and a kindergartner. My third grader is now currently in a class that's too small. Like his grade is 28. So that's, that's like too small, it's only 14 students in each class. And it doesn't provide as much opportunity for him to find friends and, and things like that, right? And that's what we're talking about, one of the biggest problems down at KCS is. Uh, it's also underutilized, right? There's, there's more classroom space there at KCS that we could put students into. So I think, you know, again, if enrollments change, I mean, this allows for the flexibility of your, you know, and I think a big factor is you're gonna be staying close to your school, you know? If you live next to ML Day, we're not gonna bust you an hour and a half to get you to KCS, I don't think. 'Cause it just costs too much, uh, money in the end.
I think the other thing that, that we looked at and we didn't call out specifically was the master facilities plan that was done in 2016 and that was really important for us to use. There was a tremendous amount of work that went into really understanding what were the resources within the district and how do we maximize that capacity, right? And so that 2016, what that 2016 report and study did was say, at some point, based on the data we know, you might, we might get too small. And when we do that, here's our recommendation. But until that point, here's the best way to use our resources. So we spent a lot of time looking at that in both, um, task force groups and really saying, are we there yet? Are we there yet? This, all of this work said, this is where, you know, if we get to this point. And what we realized, like Ken or Joe said, we're not there yet, but it gave us a guidance, it gave, gave us a framework.
Keith, how we doing on that?
We're doing fine.
One more question?
Sure.
Jack, I have a question.
Um, yeah, Jack, for you from Arundel, uh, two points I'd like to make. First, on, on this, uh, recent estimate of, uh, huge growth of kids in, in Kenabunk Port. Uh, frankly, I wonder if they were smoking about those ideas. The, the price of homes is such that young families simply can't afford to move to Kenabunk Port. And so the probability in my mind is very, very low that those numbers can even remotely be, be reached. Secondly, uh, so all four schools are performing at the top 5% of all elementary schools in Maine. And what I love about that as well, uh, the, the balancing, I think, will help keep education at that level. The, the goal is to have, and, and it's happening today, even with the imbalance, that all, all the schools are doing well. This will improve the probability, I believe, of, of keeping all schools really performing very, very well. Finally, the, all the kids in the three towns will come together in pre-K. Well, I mean, it's voluntary, so most of them will come. Kindergarten through five is largely, uh, in one school, except for Kenabunk. And then they all come back together again in mid-school. So I think we're truly moving toward a, a, a single community in, in that regard. And we'll be stronger for it.
And I can tell you, having a, having a, one who went through the first year of pre-K, we, we, we see her friends from pre-K all the time. And when she plays basketball or soccer, where the, the towns are getting together with the rec departments because they're too small without it. Uh, like we just don't have enough, you know, kids to run, something without us all coming together.
Jack, I, what I, one of the points that I appreciate that you always make is how good our schools are. We have high-performing, amazing teachers, amazing resources. And that is true for every single one of our elementary schools, whether you're here in ML Day, or you're at KES, or C Road, or KCS. And so we feel so empowered by this plan because we think that no matter where a student goes, they are gonna get an exceptional education, right? And they're gonna have access to amazing resources and amazing staff. And so this just feels like a great way to, you know, it's, it's a benefit, right? That everybody's gonna get an equitable experience no matter where they go.
And just a couple of things to close. So if you're gonna remember a couple of things from this presentation, so one, the schools are gonna stay the way they are today in the proposal. That's the recommendation, the schools will stay the same. So ML Day will be K through five, KCS will be K through five, and the two Kenabunk Port schools will stay the way they are. Okay, that's the first thing. Um, the second thing is, if your child is currently in a school, they're probably less likely to experience any change. What we're trying to do is the students that are gonna be signing up for school, maybe they're, they've lived in the town and now they're aging into school, or maybe they just moved into the town. But if they're a new student in the system, they will go through central registration, okay? Um, and what was the third thing? And the third thing is, a lot of people think this problem is just a Kenabunk Port problem. If you ask around, they go, the problem's at Kenabunk Port. Why did everyone else have to change? By going through all the data, we really found that the problem was more widespread, but it was just different. How many of you actually knew Arundel was busting at the seams and we don't even have room for 50 of our own kids? A lot of people don't know that, right? So you have high classrooms in Kenabunk, you got low in Kenabunk Port, you got ML Day busting at the seams. And it's a real problem. If we had to fix them individually in each individual school, what would we do? Start building wings off this brand-new school? I mean, that, you'd have board buildings outside again? I mean, we don't want any of that, right? So really what we've done is we've come together as three towns to make what makes the most sense and at low expense to the taxpayers with little change for our current students in the school system. And it's just gonna make a lot of sense. So we hope that the presentation was helpful. Was there any more questions?
Yeah, there's one more.
Yeah, there's one question. What happens for the sake of argument, you've got 10 new people coming in from the system?
Ed, state your name, please.
Well, I'm sorry?
State your name, please.
Oh, yeah, oh, we're bringing, I didn't know, I was okay, thank you. Ed Koretko from Kenabunk. Let's say you have 10 new people. And those 10 new people have specific needs whereby they're going to go, let's say they're all from Kenabunk, so they have to go to KES. Well, now you have to fill some people down in Kenabunk Port and K, uh, K, uh, KCS. Now what do you do? Now you have to, I would assume you'd have to take people who are already in the system and move them instead of just new, new people.
We're, we're trying to minimize that. The students that are currently there.
But let's just say you can't, let's just say...
So in your scenario, Ed, you said 10 new families, right?
Yeah, just say 10 new families or 10...
So remember those factors that we put up there, eight factors.
Right.
So administration, every time one of those new families comes forward and says, here I am, I'm ready to go to elementary school. I've never been in your school.
Right.
I have no other siblings. Administration would take that family and their situation. They would look at all of those different factors and based on that, they would make an assignment.
And let, and let's say, and based on those factors, it dictated that they were gonna go to Kenabunk Elementary School. Okay. Parents, that's where they fit, whether it be special needs or whatever that might fit. Well, now you haven't put anybody else in KCS out of those 10.
Yep.
Would you now have to move existing families over to Kenabunk?
Not necessarily. 'Cause we don't know, we don't know what grades they're in. They're, they're, you're not gonna have, out of 10 new families coming in, they're not all gonna be first graders. I mean, the likelihood of that happening is highly unlikely, right? The idea is not to, new people come in, people that are here, you gotta push them out because you gotta make room. It's probably not gonna happen in that situation. But at the end of the day, what we're asking the superintendent is to actually execute the policy that's currently in place today, which says, when there are enrollment problems, you need to figure it out and move the kids where they need to go. So basically what Sarah was saying, that child comes in, the superintendent's gonna have like a master plan in front of him to say, alright, here are all my classrooms. Where do they live? You know, do they have a sibling in the school system? Um, how long of a bus ride is it gonna be? And they're basically gonna match them up and it's gonna be like a rubrics, right? Where they're basically gonna follow this plan and say, okay, this is where the, this is where the child ends up going.
I'm a huge believer in Murphy's Law, you know?
We play Murphy's Law a lot. And if you ask any of these people, I'd say, alright, let me play devil's advocate here. What if this all goes south? But we would, we played those things.
And it's obvious, you guys have done a great job and you've done a lot of work. There's, there's no question about that. I mean, I, I sit here and I'm just, you know, um, trying to understand whether it's all gonna work seamlessly. I don't wanna talk about it.
And you and, you and me both, right? I think that's the whole point. And that's why, I, I think the other reason why this feels like the right solution is it allows, allows for flexibility, right? It allows us after nine months to say, is this doing what we intended it to do? Is it happening quick enough? Do we still have holes in our enrollment? Are we still busting at the seams at ML Day? Do we still have class sizes of 22 and 13, right? So Joe's class size of, what's third grade?
Four, yeah, third grade is now currently 14.
14, in two grades. At KCS, there's one grade, one grade that has 14 kids. So, so it allows us to be flexible. And I am the biggest skeptic too. We have gone through every possible problem. And you're absolutely right, you can't predict. And I think that this one, unlike all of the other 15 that we went through, this one allows for the most flexibility for that exact reason, Ed. Steve, did you have a comment on that?
Um, yes, Steve Markey, Kenabunk. Um, just to be clear, we have four elementary schools, but within our elementary schools, there are two specialized programs, um, that are divided out between the four. So if you were in one of the more intense, um, specialized instruction programs, they wouldn't all be located within one building. Um, and that's for a number of reasons. So, um, there are resource rooms in all schools, but then the specialized programs, there are two of them at the elementary, two different schools in all cases.
So if it was the case of that all 10 kids came in and needed specialized programs, what Steve's saying is that still wouldn't mean that all 10 kids...
Very unlikely.
And it's unlikely for the fact, district-wide, within those programs, the total is unlikely to be 10 currently in those specialized programs currently out of 2,600 students. The likelihood of getting 10 unique would, but we'll be prepared because we're, we are prepared for that.
Yeah, and point well made, like, let's come back together in nine months and see if it's working. Those are bold.
Jason?
Uh, yeah, Jason, uh, Arundel. Is there a way, without creating a ton of work for the administrative end of it, to take the existing enrollment now and essentially pretend that this is implemented and actually see if this plan works with the existing enrollment to, to see where the kids end up going? Does that, does that even though?
No, you, that's, so I actually have an email submitted for Steve that says that exact thing. Like, hey, is there a scenario where we could play out where we looked back a couple of years and looked at movement data?
Right.
And when I started writing the email, I, and I was thinking about it, like, okay, we wouldn't be able to factor in parent preference. We wouldn't be able to factor in, um, needs of the child per se. We wouldn't be, and there were a lot, and so I was like, um, I don't, I don't know if we can.
Yeah.
It's an interesting activity for us to think about. Could we play out and see, of the 48 families that moved in last year, what could this have looked like? Yeah, I think that's a great...
It's a very easy...
Yeah, we did ask...
You have nothing to do, really.
I mean, so Jason, like, one of my biggest things on a question like that was like, how, like, our big question going around was how quickly can we implement this? So one of our questions was, how many students sort of on average move in to our district every year? Right? 'Cause they're the ones that were, are gonna be directly influenced by this. I think last year was 54, if I remember that number right. So I mean, inconsistently in the 50s. I mean, if you had 20 or 30 of those that then now go to KCS, in two years, you're almost up to 200, you know? So, I mean, so that's why we're seeing like, yeah. And again, I think it's just a, yeah, that flexibility there. Again, it's like, we've had two really large fifth grade classes in this building.
Considering the other plans we had, had we, had we gone with some of the other plans we were looking at? Considering the other plans we had, had we gone with some of the other plans we were looking at and you're literally shifting, these grades go to this school and these grades go to this school, and all of a sudden, you find out it doesn't work, that's a much bigger problem to fix than saying, let's use the policies that are in place today to make it work the best that we can. And I think it gives all three towns and the school board the most flexibility to bob and weave as we see adjustments in the population. And it doesn't really cost us any money to do that. The taxpayers are very excited about that.
Yeah, we're very little. And again, all of our schools are good. I just looked at the MEA scores today, I'm just comparing the district scores, they're all
Keith, how'd we do?
I think you did great.
Any questions, anything else?
Appreciate all the work you guys did.
Yeah, there is one more because you said something that we couldn't get an answer from last Tuesday, and that was the cost. The cost, and you basically said it wasn't going to cost us anything.
There's going to be little costs, but, okay.
And the cost would come from
So, one cost that this sort of relies on is that what's currently in the budget already for centralized registrations, that's already being put in the budget. And so, it's already being recommended by the superintendent. Ironically, at the same time that we were coming up with this idea, that two conversations are happening at the same time. So, that would not be a new cost beyond this budget. Certainly, I think there's a question of who staffs it, who does that? Who manages this registration? I don't know the answer to that. It's not in the budget to hire somebody new. There are new positions, whether or not that person does. So, I'm not sure it impacts staffing all that much at this point. The other thing that's in the budget is the projected enrollment study, right? And that's already in the budget at this point as well.
But if you shift people down to KES and you have open classrooms now, I would assume that if those classrooms are filled, you're going to have to hire more staff.
Potentially, or staff just shift, which is what they do now. Staff shift all the time, you know? So, for example, KES right now has a really big second grade. And so, there's a proposal of what happens to those second graders when they go to C Road. Is there enough staff there? And so, a staff, the recommendation is that staff move. So, I don't think it's, if anything, it's just a shifting of staff, the re-election of staff.
Instead of moving up to C Road, if they moved over to KCS, then we moved that staff to KCS instead of C Road.
So, just to just throw a couple ballpark figures out, when we were going through a lot of the options, a lot of them were ruled out immediately because some were like, close the school, okay, we can't do that. Then one was, okay, move pre-K from here to here. And it's like, the administration said, okay, we're going to make a decision that if you're in pre-K, you go back to the town. So, as we were going through all these different decisions, the big three came down to the original three that were part of the first phase. And just for ballpark figures, it was anywhere from $530,000 to $700,000 a year annually. And then after four years, because of the bus rental fees, they go down after four years, and then it goes down to like $350,000 a year. When you look at this approach, it might be somewhere around $30,000, maybe. But again, we don't want to throw any numbers that are absolute because this hasn't been voted on by the school board, and that's really important. But just as a, from a working document, I'm just trying to throw some numbers to give you an idea of what we are looking at. And that was one of our big considerations as we're looking at proposals.
So, on that note, just one last, so just so again, we'll turn the process. On Wednesday night, we have our hopefully last task force enrollment meeting, we'll see. That's at 6:00 at KES. Anybody's welcome to come to any of those meetings. We were going to de-lease these three-town presentations, any of the feedback or questions that we got. We're going to prepare for Wednesday, March 25th, for the special workshop presentation to the full board. Everybody is welcome to come to that. I believe we're doing it as a workshop presentation, so there'll be, it will essentially be a first read for the board. We're not asking them to make any decisions at that point, but to really consider this proposal, ask us questions. We'll go back to the drawing board if we need to. But the ultimate goal is that this is decided upon pretty quickly. Either way, our hope is that the board will accept this recommendation because as you saw in our proposal, June 1 is when we'd like to kick this off, so that's what we're hoping. Steve?
I just want to, Steve Markey, Kennebunk, just to respond to a comment about costs. With the decline of enrollment, there's actually been a reduction of seven classroom teachers in the last nine years, eight years. So, when I was first hired as a school principal in this district, there were 60 K5 classrooms. There are now 53 next year, K5 classrooms, I believe, 54. So, we've reduced six classrooms, and we also have some small class sizes within them. So, we have been really mindful of costs throughout. And that's why that large cohort at KES will transition a teacher to C Road because you can't actually educate those kids without moving the teacher with them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming.
Appreciate your time.